It is Women Matters shortly before Christmas 2024. Here, maybe she makes it with the technology. It's not always easy. Monia from Vienna. But let's start with Christine and then Lorraine, I take you at the end and then you tell us what is going on with you. Okay?
Okay, I don't really have a whole lot to say. Tom's got more medical issues that have come up. So he's going for more diagnostic tests and depending, it may or may not require surgery. But that'll be, it's nothing emergent. So it'll take some time to figure out what's going on for him. You know, busy. It's a busy time of year. What can I say? But I'm looking forward to some changes in 2025. So I'm excited about that. Lot, I have a lot to look forward to next year. Let me put it that way. So, and I will pass on to Victoria.
Oh, I'm already muted. Thank you. I, yeah, I'm on a roller coaster these days. Uh oh, Monia's gone again. Speaking of roller coasters.
She said she couldn't hear us. So there's something going on which is not both technology.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I just, just circumstantially, I'm going back and forth between incredibly hectic days, which are very celebratory. Lots of, lots of doorbells going here. Different, through different communities I'm involved with, so different Christmas events, or well, not Christmas advent events. And then, and then days of like today might be a day like that where I think it's just exhaustion. But, but it feels like, like today when I woke up, I woke up in tears. So it's this feeling of highs, the highs and lows are really high and low right now. And so it feels very, you know, the highs are great. Yesterday I had an incredibly fabulous day. But I guess it's just the exhaustion because like yesterday I was out from six thirty in the morning till ten, eleven last night. So I guess, I guess it's just natural to be, to feel a little bit depressed when you wake up the next morning. I thought I would sleep in this morning, but I, I lately I just wake up because I'm in a, in a pattern now of being out of the house by seven. So, or before seven. So I guess, I guess everything's okay. I, I guess that's my check in. It's, but it's, I don't know how much I recommend that kind of a life of the intensity and then the, and then you, it's like someone dropped you from a very high height. And I will pass to Lorraine.
Yeah, hi. I don't know if Victoria mentioned this before, but I was out at a music venue a few weeks ago. And I looked up to my left and there was Victoria. And we had never met in person. But you looked exactly the way you look on video. So that was, that was fun. Anyway, as Christine may have filled you in, I sold my house and right now I've got, I've got to move in less than three weeks. So I'm busy organizing and planning and fixing various fixes that I have to get done. My realtor is coming over any minute. And it's exciting, but also nerve wracking. And like Christine, it sounds like Christine mentioned, I have a friend who's got this built out area underneath her garage. That's adorable. It's this tiny little apartment. And so I'm gonna stay there for a few months until I find someplace to buy, which is my plan. So there's that. And yeah, I have a niece who's got cancer. And at the moment, she's been fighting it for 15 years. And at the moment, she seems to be in very good shape. So we're happy about that. Christmas is sort of getting blown away. I, I just, somebody invited me for Christmas dinner. I'm very willing to go. Usually I like to do something for the holidays myself, but no way, not that, not this year. No tree, no lights, no nothing. So anyway, that's where I'm at. Gertrude?
Yeah, hi. Sorry I'm late. I, I have a seminar to lead right till six o'clock and sometimes it goes over. So check in. Is that the, okay. I'm Gethard from Germany, middle, north of Frankfurt. And it's a lot happening. So we just booked all the, the train rides from to one daughter where the other comes and then they go and we go to the third one. So it's, it's kind of was like logistics, how to, how to spend what days with whom and presents and things like that. And I had some wonderful coachings this, this last week, last two weeks. So it's, it's like wrapping up where one is really, was really impressing me. So she is the head of a kitchen with, I don't know, five chefs or so. And to find the right words in her field, like to, to get into her world, to make clear what I mean, that was really, really. Oh, yeah, I was pretty proud that I could do that. And, and she had a lot of takeaways from that. Yeah, I bruised my, my ribs. And this is pretty like coughing and sneezing is not a good idea. Yeah, but, but I'm, I'm, I'm fine. And I'm checking the last checklists before the end of the year. Hi, Monia. We cannot hear you.
She doesn't have a microphone. It doesn't, it doesn't show. So there is something which is not.
Here we go. When you unmute yourself, did everybody speak?
I can hear you now. Thank you.
So Monia, I hand over to you for the check in.
Yeah, come on, unmute yourself and check in, Monia.
Well, again, unexpected technical difficulties. I'm stressed. But I will relax soon and I hope you're all fine. We are very Christmasy and I'm rather tired most of the time. Yeah. I guess that's about the essentials. I don't know why I'm so tired, but I just went shopping with my cart. And I just feel exhausted. So maybe it's old age. I don't know. Okay. Do we have a topic?
Not yet. First I check in. And yeah, I don't know if you hear my voice. I have a basementative worship, which obviously also some sort of cold, which I didn't have for the last 15 years. Any, any cold or influenza? No, it's not influenza. It's just the voice is going down and sometimes coughing. But tomorrow it will be better. I'm quite sure. I will have on Wednesday my Italian exam. So I try to, to, to read what we did in the last three months or four months. I'm really not very inspired because at the end I know everything. But in exams, then I might not be alert enough for something like this. And then there happen the, the errors. But I'm quite convinced that I will make it for sure. It's, I don't know if I told you, because we need the exam. If you want, I want to ask the Italian citizenship. And so you need to have a language exam. And it's quite, I mean, if I didn't know Italian very well, if I had to learn it, it would be really, really, really hard. So, you know, I studied it intensely 35 years ago or so. And I practiced it not very much in the late years, later years, but at the beginning a lot. So. But the poor other ones, there's a person from Azerbaijan or from Afghanistan and all these people, they, I think they are struggling. You can see it also when they speak. So not easy. Anyway, I'm looking forward that this is over. What I was listening to the topic, next year it should be different and better or something should change. And so I'm wondering what you, I heard it from Lorraine for sure because she leaves the house. But also Christine, you said that next year you want to have a different. I hope it will be somehow different. And maybe the others have some idea for this too. So I try not to speak too much. So I give over to who wants to start. Maybe Christine, you was the first one to, to mention that.
So is the topic just talking about what we're looking forward to or the changes we're anticipating? Just, okay. Well, if I go through the year, the first order of business is my daughter is getting married April 11th. So yesterday she was over and we were talking about details and it's fun. It's also made it hard for me to fall asleep, but it's fun. Yeah, some, some details that we're trying to figure out. And, but that's all, you know, it's all a good thing. It's all a happy thing. And then I will be going to Europe in May and June for IEC. And I'm turning 70 in June. So we are going to extend our trip in Europe. And we're going to Provence before IEC. And we'll spend about 10 days in Provence and Lyon and then go to Budapest and IEC. And then I'll turn 70 in June. And then I have a high school graduation, a high school reunion in September, which actually I'm looking forward to. I know a lot of people don't look forward to those or care about them. But it's a chance to go back home where I grew up. And so those are, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Hopefully, hopefully no illnesses or, or bad things. But those are all things that I'm looking forward to for next year. And yeah, I mean, the, the wedding is a little nerve wracking because there's just a lot of planning. And it's kind of falls on me and my daughter. And then a trip to Europe has a lot of planning with it. But I'm gonna see my brother and sister in January and get to visit with them also. So that's fun, going to Florida where my brother stays for the winter and we're all getting together to spend some time. So a lot to look forward to, really. I think, oh, maybe the biggest thing, actually. By the end of, Lorraine's probably laughing at me. By the end of 2025, I do plan to have retired. So that's, that I'm kind of being pushed in that direction because of some things coming up at my office, where I'm not going to have as much access in going forward into 2025. I will not be able to utilize the, the office as much as I have it now. So I'm just using that as impetus to say it's time, I'm gonna be winding down. So in January, I'll begin to talk to people about that transition and how they want to go about it. If they're gonna stay in therapy with somebody or just stop or whatever. So not anxious about it, but again, it requires a certain amount of thinking and trying to figure out what's the best way to deal with the various people. So I don't know. That's about it. Looking forward to the next year personally. So anybody else have stuff to add?
Yeah, it's, it's also, there's a feeling of excitement for me as well. This is something I've been wanting to do because I'm not especially good at puttering around the house. I don't even like to take care of plants. I know that sounds very kind of unwoke. But I just am looking forward. It's like a next level of freedom for me. I, this is gonna sound terrible, but anyway, I don't have to take care of a husband. And I don't, you know, I will be retired completely by the end of January. So I won't be taking care of patients. I do take care of my family and friends and, you know, all of that because that kind of fuels me. But I fully expect, even with that positive direction, I fully expect there'll be some mornings I wake up in tears doubting myself. What did you do? You have this beautiful home and, because that's who I am. I will fall into self doubt. But I sort of, I'm so used to that by now that I sort of have more hope that I'll be able to pull out of it more quickly. I mean, it just goes with the territory. When you're me, that's what you do. Because you've got this, one side of me is this hard, rational, organized, programmable person. And then the other side is all these mushy feelings. So they're gonna come up and, and I should welcome them because they round me out, I guess. So I'm, I'm sort of looking forward with an eye on, okay, what are gonna be the tough moments? And they're gonna come. So just trying to prepare from that perspective, you know, good stuff and knowing me with, you know, the obstacles that will arrive. So that somehow feels more mature. So, so anyway, so it's, it's kind of a whole new, I think, sense of freedom. Houses are wonderful, but they're tremendous responsibilities. And that's not where my love goes, taking care of stuff, you know? I like taking care of people, but you know, I have a renewed sense of boundaries, that sort of thing. So you know, it's, it's playing the integration game for me. Because both impulses have always been very strong. So that's my story.
Well, I just wanted to say, I, it normally in 40 minutes, when I log off this call, I, I normally go to a group therapy session on Zoom. That's a, I'm, I provide, well, for those of you in California, my friend is the university. So it's UCSD. And, and it's on dialectical behavioral therapy. And so I just thought, Lorraine, when you were talking, it just made me laugh because I thought, because today I have to miss the group because I'm gonna go for this aquatic therapy in this swimming pool. She's between mind or body. And I decided I'll, I'll go with the body for the moment and hope my mind. But thank you, because, because then it made me laugh. Because when you shared that, I thought, oh, this is the best of both worlds. Like I get a little touch of dialectical behavioral therapy, you know, to get me launched. And then I'll go take care of my body by swimming in the pool. So, because that whole thing of the, of the, the rational and the emotional, and, and then bringing them together in the wise mind. And that's exactly, you know, that's why I keep going to this group. It's, it's an open ended group. And it seems like every week there's something to talk about where, where either the rational mind is taking over or the emotional mind is taking over into how to integrate. So anyway, thank you for that. So I get the best of both worlds.
Victoria, I didn't get your intentions for 25. Did you mention them or did I miss them?
Oh, Monia, you're always after me. I was sort of waiting for you to do that. Well, I, I, that is my intention. Is that fair? To get my body in mind? Get, get everything in this, I mean, I, I've been, for the moment, getting this, this order for aquatic therapy has been a real blessing because I, I miss swimming. I, as you probably all know, I spend my whole life in the pool. I have a pool, but it's cold. And so I managed through a lot of work to, to get a doctor's order that I can go to this pool. It's actually the hotel. It's a little bit peculiar. I went for the first time last week. But I just real, I really, I don't, I feel like I'm getting really old really fast and I just don't, it just seems inappropriate. And so I want to do what I can. And because I love water so much, I feel like it's, it's, it also helps the mind, the mind and the body. Just the, I mean, my huge project, I don't know if I can do it or not. I'm gonna find out tomorrow some information is to try to actually heat my own pool, which nobody does in California anymore, except hotels and, and, you know, facilities, sports facilities. So it's probably astronomically expensive. But apropos of having a house, Lorraine, my idea was, my house is falling apart. You all know. You've, you've seen even on Zoom, the, the roof falling in and the ceiling and everything. But I thought, like you said, where do I put my love? I, you said, Lorraine, it's, I, I resonate with that. Because like, I don't, even if the whole house like falls into total shambles, it suddenly hit me. If I can, if I can afford somehow with the money coming from my mother's estate to heat my pool, then, then that might be a hope, you know, that, that I can actually, you know, because then it's something that actually is life affirming and not just, you know, looking after stuff, as you said, because I totally resonate with it. So is that good enough, Monia? Do I need to add anything?
Okay.
Are you, are you satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
Well, and it's mind and body. I mean, I, I suffer from depression, as you probably all know. And I, but I, I just feel like I need to work on every front for that.
Swimming is an excellent therapy. I know that it grounds you, as basic as it sounds. I just wanted to compliment Christine because you don't look like 70, look like 50 at least.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's nothing. So, well, my, my grandson is going to marry April. And luckily, so I'm more distant to this and I'm not involved and I refuse to be involved. Shopping dress already. So I'll just do that in, in March or something. But they are, they seem to be happy and that's okay. And I don't have the trouble of owning a house. But we now have, probably have to install electric garage doors. And this will amount to 35,000 euros, which is quite a lot. Because one door was damaged and so they, anyway, the apartment is no longer ours. It belongs to my daughter. We just live here. And she has to decide what to do and we don't. So it's quite easy. What am I expecting? Well, I know that my husband's health probably won't improve. So him getting less and less and me doing more and more will probably have to end sometimes. Because once I'm that tired, because I do so much, it's, yeah, it's better to stop. On the positive side, I am thinking about discussing to stop the tantric sex I'm having at my age. Because it's, on one hand, it's just beautiful. And on the other hand, it's getting more and more strenuous. So this will be a lot of discussion to have with my partner. And, but I guess it's time to stop now and just go to the mental intercourse or something like that, if this is possible. Yeah, I never thought that I would have this problem at 83. And it's funny, in one respect. And yeah.
So Is the problem, what is the problem for you? Giving it up or when you said?
The problem is missing out on this kind of energy of expanding your consciousness, quite naturally. To, to me at least, it always expands enormously, which I probably won't have that way anymore. But I, I don't know. Maybe I find another way to expand it. Yeah. Otherwise, I wouldn't say that I'm looking forward to 25. I'm sort of hesitant. But I take it as it comes. That's the only way I have to. And whatever, whatever challenges will appear, I will look at them and try not to lose my sense of humor and find the funny side of everything. And the cosmic joke, as Victoria might call it. So yeah, I hope the world finds a way to get along and not to fight. I have just read, I started reading a book. It's called Possibilities by Uri, U R Y. And he is a poss, he's someone who enables different looks on conflicts. And I find it very interesting. And I will continue that way. I don't, will, I won't be able to contribute to the world. But at least in my surroundings, it might become also useful. Okay, that's about what I'm expecting of 2025. Gertrude? What new projects and programs will you be going through?
You're asking the right direction.
Sharing.
Actually, I want to crack the code of abundance, like not, yeah, just let scarcity behind. And it's not only money. It's, it's just this, yeah, just have a container that overflows. And there are some, yeah, some possibilities in the, in the pipeline, like to do the master's, master course for instant change. Or what I stumbled upon was the pain free summit they did two weeks ago. And this guy is like incredible. Who came up with like to, to get back to your, like your body, like it was invented from in the first place, like, and, and, and he showed us several things, how to get back into, what did they call it? Where, where everything is aligned, your head, your shoulders, your hips, everything stapled upon each other. And so I, I want to dig deeper into this, like how, and he, he has people with, I don't know, teenagers up to 85 year old people that yeah, also to regain your power to, to get your physical strengths back in a way that Physical strengths back in a way that. So to, to be pain free, but then go beyond. And yeah, I was very intrigued by, by this guy who, who created all of this. He's, he's twenty six, so it's amazing. I, I'm really so amazed by those young people. Maybe not each and everyone, but, but like. Some they, they're really of another kind, I think. Yeah, so.
You haven't named the name.
Yeah, Justus Hilt. And the, the company is the original body, that's the company. Yeah, and it's for us, it's time to. To find where to live. So it could be buy a house, but not us, but we sold the house so two years ago. And we handed over the money to our daughters. And they would buy something where we can live. So it's a little bit like Monia said, yeah. So that we don't have to. To deal with. Everything in the house, but have a nice possibility. With. Yeah, an attily for my husband, who is a photographer and, and being close to the kids. And they want to move, so we're not so sure where to settle, but this will be decided next year. And. What Monia, eh, no, Victoria said this, like growing all of healing, like getting old quickly. But also to stop that and I did an attempt with my training. Yeah. And also there is a feeling that with Assad. Of fleeing to Moscow and. That there is a lot of change in the air. That could lead to something positive. I don't know what the states will contribute to that. This is like a Joker courage, so you don't, you don't know. But there is something in the air, what I, I, I just lean towards. Then more peace will, will be here on the planet. And that the Ukraine and. In Gaza and. Have you? So. That the suffering is over. Yeah. I had a very powerful coaching session with somebody from Ukraine. And so, Monia, when you say, I cannot do anything about the world, but the way we are talking to each other and the way we are being makes a difference in the world, I think. So. Yeah, I think we can contribute in another way. Then on the three D world.
Mentioning Ukraine, I just want to let everybody know, in case you're interested. The January meeting, which I think is on the eleventh, the second Saturday of January, San Diego Integral meets. And they're going to have a panel of Ukrainians. Speaking, so that'll be really interesting. Yeah. Tucker, I think Tucker Walsh, I don't know if people know who Tucker Walsh is, but he's, he's knows the people and he put together the, the panel.
Yeah, and Victoria might come or. Okay. Yeah, I know, I know Tucker. Yeah.
I have to get out my voice and say something. So I hope that all your hopes will come true. For me, for twenty five, I really hope that I will resolve my house problem, you know? I like to take care for it up to certain point, especially to my trees. I did three or four olive trees today, pruning the olive trees and I really love that. To go out, be in nature and do something, despite my arms, sometimes then they hurt a little bit, but okay. This is the age coming quicker, no? Probably, maybe. I don't, I don't know. After I've done two hours with the trees, I feel like, like strong again, like, like before. And when I don't do anything, it was raining the last few days and I sit inside in front of the stove. And then I feel like, oh, I'm getting all things like that. And as soon as I'm out. Wonderful. So I hope that I will find the right people. There are increasing the people writing to me and I do Zoom talks and. Two people wanted to come, one has said he wouldn't come, but now a woman is here for some months. And yesterday, somebody else, three people, they want to get to know me and things like that. So it has increased the, the number of people being interested. Also then I write back and most of them, they don't, they don't reply, but at least it feels like something is moving. I also had come to the point about six weeks ago, okay, at the end I need to sell it. And then I have to find something, but near the center of the little village. Because, you know, when I go somewhere else, it must be where I can go by feet. Because here you have to have a car and to go out with the car, otherwise it's just. Difficult. Yeah, I hope to, to resolve this. And yeah, to continue to get to know a lot of good people and have a lot of good discussions and. Victoria is in the car now. Have a good trip. And. I'm altogether hopeful, but I think it will still get worse a little bit before it can get better. So maybe we have to come really to the bottom to, to understand what is going on. To be able then to get more consciousness about. How we want to live and how we don't want others to. To dominate and to, to, to render in zero, what is it in, in English? To make fun of us by manipulating us and things like that. So. I hope that we will come to the point. In one way or the other, but better in a good way than in the, in the not so good way. So I'm hoping for that. Yeah, so far to me.
Um, Heidi, I, I know you were looking to sell or and or have a partner, right?
Yeah, yeah, well.
So are those still both possibilities or not?
Eh, I would like to have one or several partners, you know, for the house. And to sell them or find a way where we are con, co proprietors in some. And if I sell it, I could have sold it twice, but then I would have needed to go away. And that's not yet what I want, because I don't want to sit in a, in an apartment and. I need my garden, I need my, my trees and. And I have created this in thirty five, almost forty years. I have built all up, so. I would like to be a witness of how it's going on, even if it will change. But, you know, the. The possibility to go out and do something, that's for me so important, life saving in many ways. Because otherwise I would go into depression if I didn't have the nature to, to, to be there. I can't stay, live anymore in the third floor somewhere, needing to go the steps down, as I did all my life before I came here. I, if it is possible, I want to stay here and we will see how it's going. So I'm confident that something will open up.
Well, if you were to ever sell it, you could always ask to maintain a garden plot. And come back during olive harvesting season to take care of the trees. See if you could have a little garden.
Yeah, that's not the way, because I can't work eight hours a day. I go out and every day I do an hour or two. And when I stay somewhere else, I would need to have the car and come back and that, that wouldn't feel, if I sell it completely, then I'm gone. I don't come back. So I always have.
You're gonna sell your car too? Sell your car? Sell your car also? Just?
No, my car is my freedom. I need my car. Yeah.
Uh, Heidi, I have to visit you.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, really. I mean, it's now long in the making.
Christine who knows how I live, only one of you. Yeah, yeah.
I have an idea. Maybe I should build a swimming pool and a jacuzzi and heat it. On, on your property and just forget about my house here. Sell everything here and go to Italy.
I wanted to say, Victoria, eh, the heating, why don't you do it with solar panels? That's.
Oh, I, I plan to. Yeah.
And it, it shouldn't be so difficult, because it's just, you know. It shouldn't be too expensive. That's what I mean. And you have in California, you have a lot of sun and the few days where it's not warm enough, okay, you know, but. Most of the days, when here, when we have sun and it's warm. When it's cold, it's because of the north wind, but the solar panels don't. They don't bother about north wind, they just take the sun. So it should be warm enough. In your place, so. I wish that you are able to do that. The thing is coming here for everybody is what do they do here? This person who is here now, she can work an internet. And people, younger people who want to go into another country, they have to know how to live, I mean, what to live from. I mean, it is, it's not so easy. When you have a certain age and you get the pension, then you can move more easily. But if you have to work still. Not so easy. Anyway, I'm hopefully hopeful about something will show up. I'm getting less nervous and less. In this regard, less.
Tense.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Yeah, come.
I put a link in the, in the chat. About. A video I stumbled upon. Yesterday and it's Greg Braden. I don't know if you know him, he's in the, he, he's a scientist. And worked really in, in the high level scientific circles. And he says that. What's under radar, it's more like to. To look at what's happening in, in medicine and, and so to. And that maybe humankind cannot recover from. So it, it's really interesting to see, like to have chips in, in your brain and to have nano something in your blood. And so he, he says that this is, is more like in. There are other people on the control panel that can do something with you. So. Yeah, I, I just found it very interesting. I, I went halfway through. I haven't, haven't seen it yet completely, but. He's a very interesting guy, Greg.
Is it you? Yeah, okay.
Somebody has already clicked on it. So I, I just wanted to tell you, this is also something that is.
On the rise.
Newly on my mind. What does that mean? The tech, also that technology is invented by people like. Elon Musk or they, that don't have a, like a mandate. They are not elected. They are just doing what they feel like doing with their money.
Yeah, generally, I think this is a big danger, but also a big promise. The thing, eh, in my opinion is that technology is very advanced. But doesn't mean that we have to use everything that technology is able to do. And that we need to re-enter in a certain way, in, into blue, in the sense of getting ethics. In way, we don't have it in place.
Yeah, with AI, with technology, yeah.
It dangerous, but that's what we can do to, to, to fight for, for a human. Way of being, fight is not the right word, but to, to become the change and don't accept hazard things. You know, what they say, oh, that's good and blah, blah, blah. No, no. Just only because you can do it, doesn't mean you have to do it. And chips and brain and things like that, what they are doing now with all the radiation, which is going into our system. And so we should oppose more these influences, because they are changing us. Eh, and maybe we don't want it. Nobody, we are not, we don't, didn't agree to be changed this way, you know?
And maybe we could all watch this video and then ca, eh, come back to talk about it. So this could be a topic.
Next time, eh, that will be probably next year.
Yeah, sure, next year. Yeah.
Yeah.
We're not gonna meet on the, what, what would it be? The twenty ninth, the thirtieth? No?
Yeah, something like that.
Eh, for me it's fine, but eh, I don't know.
The thirtieth could be, I don't know, I don't know yet, because I'm traveling from.
Anyway, we can talk about that. Let's finish up here with our topic. Eh, I'm wondering still, what has happened in your life this year? Which you would like to change, which you are unhappy about and what you, next time you would do differently. That would be my checkout question sort of.
I'm realizing that by giving up music completely this last, this past year. It's, it just hit me that that's probably a major cause for my depression. And, um, and I have the instruments right in my house, ready, ready to be played at any moment of the day or night. And I've, I've neglected them for a whole year now, because I haven't had any concerts on my schedule. And I'm, I, I would like to change that. I would like to realize that it's a part of who I am and, and I need to do it. Regardless of whether I have a public or not and just reclaim that, because I've, I've lost a whole year and it's really. Well, I'm getting emotional, so goodbye.
Um, I can't think of any one thing, Heidi, that I would change, you know, from this past year going into the next year. I guess I'm always looking for finding more balance or integration, you know, between my everyday self. And my more spiritual self. You know, the different parts of me, I guess, to continue to find a way that they all can have expression and not. Not at the price of another piece of myself. So I guess that's probably it. I'm always looking for ways to be more self-aware. But also more kind. And when you have to, when, when you want to be kind and patient with other people, you, you focus on them. As opposed to myself. So I want to continue to work on being able to shift back and forth. Between those kind of more easily or without tripping myself up, I guess.
Yeah, I can second that. So there is no specific thing I wouldn't. Yeah, I can second that. So there is no specific thing I wouldn't want to do or that I'm mad about me that I have done or it it's this ongoing. Um. Yeah, expansion and integration of and I probably will not give up learning new things. That's in my DNA. Yeah, become more and more self-aware. And I can see, for example, that I um, it's now the fifth training in Weflow I did last weekend. Not this, but the before in Amsterdam and and I can feel that I'm more and more like relaxing into being and coming from there. Not so much like doing the practices or whatever, so it's more more really like listening from that place, and and I think that's that's also something I want to deepen.
I apologize, I have to leave the meeting. My realtor just showed up. He was planning to come and he came a little early, so um let me know when the next meeting is. Are we meeting in two weeks? Okay, I will try.
I cannot, I cannot um promise, but I try to be there because of, I think my train will not allow it. So could be that I'm not there.
But I will open the room and who is here is here, and then we see, okay?
Happy holidays to all of you, if I don't see you. It was very nice to see you again and for the future. See you soon. Bye-bye.
And we have lost Monia again.
Yeah, because she didn't hear anything.
Problems, yeah. So what I did wrong, maybe wrong, but it's not yet clear. I bought this bike, I think I told you about, this electric bike. And out of the internet, it seemed a little smaller, and it came and is such a huge thing, that it made a huge impression on me, and I have to overcome my, we say swine dog, my inner swine dog. To, to, it says, no, 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 you don't go with it, no. Even yesterday, or yeah, yes, no, on Sunday, yeah, yesterday was Sunday. Uh, I went, I said, yo, you try and try it out, you must get familiar with it, you know, and so maybe next time I would have um needed to be more aware how a thing like this. Not not to buy uh from the internet without having seen it or tried it out in in reality. Things like that, you know, that afterwards I think, oh, you should have done it, because it's also so so heavy. If there is something wrong with it, how do I get it to the to to repair and things like that, so not being enough. Also, my my intent is always to preview everything, every possible thing and be prepared of it, and then there happen things like that, oops, and I did something risk, how do you say that? Which can create trouble, let's say in this in this way. On the other hand, I think in my age, it's really good to to re-get on the bike to to, I didn't do it since Mark was uh gone, I didn't do it anymore, so also this training to yeah, maybe haven't done enough last year, but altogether, it's like you both said, it's uh continue the awareness and the the observation, the the um witness thing, what is going on and without trying to suppress negative voices, but just see what they are doing and ah, okay. Things like that. And yeah. Nothing really big to change.
Are either of you thinking of going to I E C in May?
Yeah, it's.
It's too expensive, I cannot afford that. I bought the the bicycle and afterwards I was really at the end of uh so, no.
I I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Anyway, you can come and see me, both of you. I have to go to Germany for the integral meeting of East Germany in 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 May. But you know, there you pay only the youth hostel and nothing else, and I will give.
Yeah, maybe I would do that. I'm I I'm not sure. Since sixteen, I was on every, but um. Um.
That's the east one, that's nicer than the west one, so, really.
Yeah, maybe you can send me the dates, I'd I.
I think thirteenth of May. Anyway.
Bye, Victoria.
Let's see in two weeks and hopefully our wishes for next year. And we can confirm.
I have one more um for for next year to uh do more self-care, self-love, self-worth. So like to to come from that place, like abundant to myself, so I can overflow.
I think this is a good idea for all of us, because uh I see this since I did the feminine power training, this is where we women really have still a big deficit in self-care and uh believing in overflow, but instead of duty and have to do this and that and that, 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 that.
Hmm, yeah.
We'll remind each other, we can remind each other, take care of ourselves.
Yes. Now I will take care of my voice, okay?
Yeah, and gute Besserung.
Thank you. Ciao, ciao.
Ciao, ciao.